Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Gregor City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 25th. I would like everybody to rise for the present wages.
Ready?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, thanks everybody. Our next item is the roll call, and I would like the record to reset that all council members are present and accounted for tonight. And my next item is our four approval agenda.
What's your opinion?
Second, all in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is presentations and announcements. Are there any council members who have presentations and announcements?
Any announcements?
Okay.
Just a reminder that there is a candidate formed here tomorrow at 6:30. Put on my name and your numbers.
Yes, thank you. There's announcement. Anybody else? I do have an announcement. I wanted to make an announcement on our close session that was held at 5:30. We had item 4A, which was a session of city manager, and the council on a three-two vote have appointed Mr. Rijo Landero as our acting city manager. And the new time staff and council will be working on recruiting an interim city manager. And then the next item is public employee appointment, finance director. And I wanted to announce that the council will be, and staff will be working on recruiting an interim finance director as soon as possible. Anything else? I think the finance director has an announcement too. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you the adopted city budget, which has been completed. The budget is also, has been posted to the city's website and is available on the city's website. It will also be available at the library and the senior center. It's not there yet, but we'll make sure that copies get into both of those places. And so if you have any questions, you may call. Alright, thank you very much. That's good to know.
Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Just a reminder, this Saturday, and it's going to be in the Gazette, I believe Harrison, I now can see him out of the audience, it's a city white trash cleanup day. So those of you who have debris around your house, if one of you defies our city, please feel free to, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., you can bring your, some trash down if it's a file number on your home, and let's beautify our city. Uh, yeah, it'll be at well number four, on Good Enough Road, between A Street and B Street, that's directly across the street from Hamron Polkway. And I want to thank the Harrisons again for doing that for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Does that conclude passers' measures?
The following week will, we are, the following week, which will be the sixth, Saturday the sixth, we will be having household hazards ways to pick up as well. So the following week will be, that will be at the Public Works Yard, and those are the hours from 8:00 a.m. through, I believe, 12:30.
Thank you. Thank you Harrison.
And I have one other announcement, mostly to the council, but I think this would be open to anyone, that the Hearthstone is conducting a tour of the new school out at the Herring Valley Park slash, the Bridges, next Wednesday at noon, and all council are invited. Just wanted to let you know that. Any other staff?
Good evening, all mayors, city council. Just wanted to, as your chief, just let you know back on Saturday, September 22nd, our sheriff's office along with the Metro Police Department.
Listen to me.
Fillmore Police did what we call a 290 registrant compliance check. 290 is sexual registrants in the city of Fillmore, also in the undercover areas. Very successful day in that we were able to contact the majority of the 38 registered offenders, both here in the city and in the outline county area. You're probably asking how many actually live in the city? Twenty-six. At this time, there was more arrests, there's some follow-up that needs to be done on those that were not home, so that's a good thing that they, the ones we did check were in compliance. So I wanted to let you know, and all of that was done on behalf of a grant, the Safe Credit Sexual Self-Offender Grant that the sheriff's office changed, so good news on that. Also, this Saturday, the 29th, once again, is the DEA Take Back Day, the drug prescription drug drop-off at our station battery from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And anonymous disposal of your unwanted, no syringes, no liquids, pill form is what we accept, and no charge and no questions.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Any presentations or announcements? Okay, so now we're going to move on to our public comments, and this is the time for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody wishes to comment on items that aren't agenda, please fill out a yellow speaker card and do the city quick. I have several this evening, and so I might ask that everybody pay attention to the time, three minutes, and we'll get through all these raptor speaker cards. And my first speaker is Mr. Bob Strom.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I have several things I want to talk about, but I'd like to cut it short and give the rest of my time to Gary Kriegel. That's alright.
Can I ask the attorney, I'm sorry? When, is that okay to do that? I know there was some, we had heard during our attorney interviews that that might not be okay, I want some clarification on that.
It's not traditional, but I haven't seen the city's policies to know if you grant that exception, but usually you only get your time and you aren't allowed to see the taboos.
Okay. I don't know what our policy is either. I know that we have allowed that to go on, only because we want to hear the public's concerns, and we believe that everybody has, should have an opportunity to state their concerns. It does cause some problems sometimes, but it's okay. It's the public's issue.
I'll respect that, Mr. Strom.
Alright.
Regarding my suggestion to Martin Farrell, publisher of the Fillmore Gazette, that he could help the city by paying back the money we loaned him, he told his readers I inferred that the money came from the general fund. When I showed him that in fact, I said the money was a redevelopment agency loan, and that he might want to correct it for his readers, he responded by calling me a tar baby, vowing to ignore me in the future, and let his readers forget another lie. Last week Farrell may have set a record for lying, I'll name a few. Farrell said that Mayor Pro-Tam Brooks voted the last city manager a salary, the highest ever. Well, that was a big lie. He did not vote for the city manager's contract, nor did Mayor Washburn, because they thought it was too much money. Those who did vote for it were Patty Walker, Lori Hernandez, and Steve Conaway. Must also be noted that the contract had some built-in automatic pay increases, I believe, that due her credit, the city manager declined to take because of her dire financial situation. Farrell said that Mayor Pro-Tam Brooks taped a student's mouth shut, a duct tape. Nope, never happened. Farrell said that Gary Kriegel engaged Danny Fitzpatrick at city hall. Nope, total fabrication. Now, there was an incident that involved Roger Campbell and some other council member, but not Mr. Kriegel. Farrell said that Mayor Washburn took blatant unlawful action causing the removal of our former city attorney. Farrell wants us all to believe that he knows more about the law than the former attorney's law firm, that said Farrell's claim is untrue. Well, he doesn't know more, that won't stop him from lying about it. Farrell also brought up religion, as though we should keep track of what religious denomination our council members belong to. Think about that. Farrell distracts himself as a congenital Catholic. Sounds like a disease. Thank God we don't judge all good Catholics who have served together on this council based on their religious affiliation or the fact that they share the same faith with Farrell. Shame on you, Martin Farrell. Some things are out of bounds during campaigns, including one's religious belief. You are an embarrassment to Fillmore, and I expect the candidates you openly support hard. I wanted to say a little bit about the cell tower. He also claimed that youths objected to electronic emissions. I never heard that. I asked Mr. Farrell if he could have told me the source, he couldn't, in fact, he kind of inferred that maybe he didn't say it. So I think we need to get that on record. And one more thing I'd like to say, he is from over there, he's called me a liar, he's called me an SOB. Last meeting, he walked out and confronted a gentleman in the back, and told him, screw you, and on his way out, he invited him outside. Now, I generally consider his antics rather clamish, but I got to thinking about it. There are two things. I don't know about his stability, I don't know if I could be in danger to my family, and I don't know how people in the audience react. Is there an intimidation factor? Are they afraid that he's going to say something to them, or write something nasty about them in his newspaper? So that, I just want to express that concern. Thank you very much.
And you? And I will state for the record, yes, the cell tower issue was because the council wanted to have a public hearing, had nothing to do with emissions or anything like that. So, my next speaker is Ms. Lori Hernandez.
Good evening, mayor and council. As I can see, I'm hoping that my city department reports a aye, because of discussion of the questions that I had at last meeting, correct?
No. Aye, aye. Say that again.
Okay. I'm asking, basically, I'm asking the council, are my questions going to be answered today? They were asked, put on the agenda, put on the last meeting. Am I incorrect, from what I heard?
I understand that, I do respond.
Yeah, Yvonne was putting in response together as America, I think they're proving it now, so I believe that Yvonne was going to respond to the media.
I don't know how Yvonne could respond, but she knew her last day was last Friday when that was.
Her last day isn't until October 1st.
She's on vacation, right? No? So then why, do I have an interim if she's still on staff? Explain that to me.
We have an acting, we have an interim.
Acting, so you're acting and it's not interim.
Acting is different.
Okay, then, so here's my next question to the council, is being as an ex-city council member, when we lost Tom Russell, we went to the League of California Cities, correct? To bring in an interim, are we going to do the same thing, or are we going to be choosing upon ourselves again?
That hasn't been decided yet.
So I'm asking, as a public citizen.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. So as a public citizen, I ask that you, council, do the right thing, and you go with the League of California Cities, which we are a member of, which we've done in the past, which has been practiced over and over, is to go that route, and not to go decide upon yourselves. The citizens deserve to have a city manager who's qualified. Interim, qualified. Even acting, qualified. That's what we deserve as a community. We all pay taxes, and that's what we deserve.
Okay, that item's on the agenda, we'll be discussing it when we get to item 8.
So, okay, so it was asked to be put on the next agenda, so it wasn't put on this agenda, so what agenda do I know when this will be brought up again?
It is on this agenda.
No, my questions, from the prior meetings.
Madam Mayor, would you like to refer those questions to the city attorney?
I hope that she's aware of it. Do you know that a letter is on its way to you to answer questions, and it's not going to be put on an agenda? And if I could remind everyone that this is public comment session, this is a public business meeting, so you're allowed to make your comments to the council, but it's not time for a discussion, it's not appropriate to ask some questions and expect the council to answer right now.
Okay, so who do I ask about that? Because it was stated in the last meeting that it was going to be put on the agenda at the end of the meeting. And it was, oh, I expect it to be on this agenda, this next agenda.
But you've already even told my team people that it's not going to be on the agenda, a letter's going to be sent to you.
Oh, so a letter is sent. Okay, but that's not what was stated in the meeting, that's just what I'm trying to make very clear. Okay, great. Alright, and again, so thank you very much for your time.
My next speaker is Ms. Sandy Keller.
Mayor Washburn, city council, interim city manager, city attorney. In the last couple of weeks, we have been introduced to big city PACs, and what those PACs can do as far as negative campaigning. And our little city of Fillmore has been barraged in the last couple of weeks, or actually last, first of all, was a survey, which we have, and I have copies if you want them, but I really want to talk more about these mail pieces that have been delivered, one on Saturday, and the other one today. And they are sponsored by Roger Campbell, who is a very influential person in our business community, and I'm really appalled that he would stoop to these tactics, to skilllessly attack not only the council, but the great individuals in person. The name of the organization is called Communities Building Together. Now, judging by these pieces, does this look like communities building together to you? I don't see it that way. I see a lot of slamming of individuals, I see skillless, you know, accusations that don't have any founding. And then I also see it's endorsed by our city, Fillmore Newspaper Record, that should not even print anything unless it's been verified as being factual. That is just absolutely irresponsible journalism. So, I'm really kind of amazed at the name Communities Building Together, because it's communities destroying Fillmore. I want to share with you what I think is really, you know, community coming together, and there's a few things off of my vision statement. Interestingly enough, that my vision is called rebuilding our city. And my ask, my consensus of where we can go after where we've been, is to turn around the corner and go up from here. So I want to point out two things that are totally opposed to these mail pieces that have come out. First of all, if you're going to succeed, and we have come through a very, very depressing time, five years of a very horrendous recession time, that has destroyed businesses in our community, shut doors, stagnated business, and just depressed the economy, household budgets and all of that. And so what do we need to do? We need to work together as a community, not go in opposite directions and split and divide and be divisive and strife, and operative strife. My consensus is, or my belief is, that we can get past where we are now and start an upward climb if we're to work together and we all go in the same direction. Does that mean that we're all going to agree on the same things? No. But that's okay, as long as we're not disagreeable about it, that if we can come up with solutions, that's creativity comes in, is when people discuss things together, but they move in the right direction, and they don't tear down and destroy from within. The other thing that I would like to say is that, one of the reasons why this is taking a toll in the community, is that we don't have an effective communication device. We have a newspaper, as you can see, that is endorsing this kind of thing, and not getting the facts out. So how do we communicate with people, and how do we get the truth out? Well, about a month ago, I came to board this council, and I proposed that we have a quarterly newspaper, a newsletter, excuse me, quarterly newsletter, that would give facts to the residents in the city on a website, and tell what kind of actions the city council is involved in, what kind of projects they're working on, what kind of projects they deny, what kind of projects they see in the future. And that way, people can find out objectively what's going on in the community. Mayor Washburn wanted to be a part of that, I commit her for that, thank you. And we, you know, we can put together a volunteer team and give the word out that is not destructive, but is constructive. Thank you.
Alright, my next speaker is Leslie Clinchew.
Mayor Washburn, the city council, Leslie Clinchew, with Chevron Environmental Management Company. And for those who don't know me, I am the project manager for the former Texaco refinery, Pacifico's Pipeline Site, that's just east of the city of Fillmore. Back after a month to just give you an update of our progress this summer, as we continue to decommission all of the subsurface underground stuff that's left behind there, primarily the concrete and the rest of the pipe. And we have found in our last foundation area a lot more concrete than we anticipated, it has extended our demolition schedule this year. We will be continuing our work through October, as long as weather permits. It's really important for us to get the rest of the underground concrete and pipe out, so that those obstacles are out of our way when we come back next year to finish our soil cleanup. Also wanted to announce, we do have a date now for the next set of public tours, that is October 18th. EPA will be here to lead those tours, there will be a 3 o'clock tour and a 5:30 tour. And we have postcards that are going out to every address in Fillmore, going in the mail Thursday. I will also be putting that information on our project's website, www.fillmoreworks.com, and you'll all also get that postcard as well, it goes to all our city and county agencies, the school district and so forth. So that opportunity's coming up, and I encourage people to participate in that. You get to hear directly from EPA about the cleanup plan they're directing us to do. We get an opportunity to look around the site, talk about the future vision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the update. I just wanted to know, folks, I've been on tour, it's worth going to, and we're seeing how they're working on ours to clean up the site and doing it well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I would like to say that too, I've done the tour and it's worthwhile, so I hope the citizens sign up for the tour, I think you'll get a lot of it. Okay, my next speaker is Ms. Marion Shaw.
I am really disturbed about this, and that I can be seen being plain and so, so negative and unbelievable. And I not only represent myself, but several other people in my age who make this a second one, but actually, there is nothing positive in this, perhaps you can maybe hope, and all that we can say is, we do not want to see people with that manner of attitude, or voting for Fillmore. And there is one person that I had considered voting for over three minutes, but after seeing how he's joined up for this, I would be touched that we can't vote for him.
Thank you for your comments. My next speaker is Ms. Norma Perez Sanford.
Hello, good evening. I know how the project pets have affected the city and the schools, but I would like to do something on my own. I may have some young men that need aid, and also young women, I think repeat escalate in the community. I would like, if you please, direct me to the person I need to, to get a couple of canvas paint and paint brushes, and I will go out and take care of this. I refuse to see repeating in my tent and in my watch.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate that. Can you coordinate with Ms. Sanford?
Yeah, if you can just give me a jingle, you know, we're trying our best to do what we can with the resources we have.
No problem.
And, you know, we're really, accept whatever help we can get from the community, I think it's great that you guys have stepped forward and greatly appreciate that, but if you just give me a call, call state of all the best for you.
So you might see me sometime between my spare hours, you know, 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock in the morning. Film the resume. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanford.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Ms. Norma Almora.
Good evening, mayor and council. Actually, I came up here for two things. One is on Central, our yearly Moonlight Sidewalk Sale. There are nine participating stores, we do this one day a year, it will be Friday, October the 5th, from 3:00 to 7:30. Participating will be Vintage Pleasures, Fox and Hound, Nanette Keller, Scented Path Apothecary, Dats Cherry, Attractions Spa, Margaret's Collectibles, Ballast Teas and Treats, and Treasure Station. Again, this will be a one day a year sidewalk sale, that will be on Friday the 5th, from 3:00 to 7:30, so I hope everyone attends. Okay, I'll try to make this quick, you guys know I get nervous, but you also know I don't get that. This campaign card came in the mail today attacking Mayor Washburn and Mayor Pro-Tam Brooks candidacies. The problem is it all is all false. What I'm realizing now, there's a lot of people upset about these flyers. I thought it was just the people in my own neighborhood, because we've all gotten together and discussed it. I didn't know people all over the city were upset about it. It claims that they raise our water and sewer rates to pay for their mismanagement. Our rates were determined by the last council and city manager. Mayor Washburn and Mayor Pro-Tam Brooks were not even on the council, yet they worked tirelessly to try to get the city to look for a less expensive sewer plant. Now they're looking for ways to cut the cost of operating and maintain their sewer plant. There is no mismanagement. Who would stoop so low as to send out these blatantly false remarks? We know who he is, and so does he. Except to know some people feel the only way they can get ahead or to win is to make others look bad. I'm telling everyone that's going to vote, and especially the young people that have never voted before, and this is their first time, please do not vote by rumor. Don't go by what your friends say, your relatives, or your neighbors. Educate yourself, meet the candidates, ask the questions. Do not believe the nasty lies you get in the mail, because when you finally vote, I want you to be proud of the vote that you've done. Spreading lies, pointing fingers, is what I tell my kindergarten students not to do. They earn points by showing us what they can do, not by blaming others for their own mistakes. People that are rude, nasty, and tell lies about others, in my opinion, when trying to get ahead, looking for a position, whether it's a job, a seat in a school board, a council or other jobs, so that they can get the position, we need to look out, because if they have no respect now, what will they be like if they do get that position? I feel very bad, because the different people that are running, if they are in any way affiliated with these nasty rumors, even if they did not give the okay to send these out, people in the city are thinking that they did give the okay, so they're actually losing votes. losing votes. They may not even know anything about this, but people are now not going to vote for them. How do I know? Because my neighbors get together and we talk and discuss. They say, "Look at this nasty stuff. This is ridiculous. Who's sending these out? Who is he supporting? We don't want them." And I feel sad for these candidates because someone is making them look very, very bad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hannibal.
My next speaker card is Mr. Martin Farren.
I'll defer to Mr. Kriegel. Mr. Kriegel's remarks.
Do you want to speak or not?
After Mr. Kriegel speaks, I'll address.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
No.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's been years since I stood before this mic, I've known same years, more than six, eight years. I've had a listen to Bob Stroh's lies and accusing me of lying, tearing the local paper, my paper apart, and I'm going to, in next week's paper, itemize every single statement he makes and what I expect from his capable state tonight. And just as a note, Madam Mayor, I noticed last week you accused me of using profanity. I don't use profanity, and I didn't do it last night. Two remarks were made from that corner, when it was loud and could be overheard, mine was under my breath, and it was not profanity. I want to address one thing. There's a big difference between an honest mistake and a lie, and it has to do with intent. I don't lie. I do make mistakes, and almost all of the criticisms addressed to the Gazette have to do with my opinion, my editorial, not the news, which takes a very small part of the paper. Last week, I made a mistake about Mr. Kriegel. I believe in 1989, it was a fistfight that took place in City Hall, the old City Hall. I believe I was there. I know Mr. Kern was there, he was the attorney at the time. And I mistakenly stated that Gary Kriegel was involved in it. Well, he was involved, but he tried to break up the fight. The next day after I made that mistake, I recognized it and I corrected it on the website, immediately without being asked, vetoed. I called two people to verify the fact I'd made a mistake. That's the way it goes. It was unintentional, and that's as far as I'm going to take it. I'm going to make a list, two accusations that have been made against me tonight, but next week, if you're reading Gazette, I'll be having to answer every single one, especially of Mr. Stroh's accusations. Incidentally, I don't hear the mayor telling people that applaud loudly for people that support the majority on the council when they clap loudly and applaud loudly in the meeting, why this emphasis on my mild statements and reactions. Anyway, next week, we'll answer all these questions specifically. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. My next speaker is Ms. Renee Chaney.
Good evening. I'm Renee Chaney, my fire carriage place. I have some good news and some bad news. You ready? Mm-hmm. We're selling pies again this year. That's the bad news. No, seriously, we're selling pies, but the bad news is Marie Camiller is going to charge $17 a pie. And that means that she's going to charge me $7.25 per pie. Last year, it was $4 a cent a quarter, and it's ridiculous. However, I'm going to bite the bullet and go ahead and do it. We're talking $2 more than it was last year. You just don't need as much. So we're going to have the same thing, the same pies, same old, same old. And seniors will be selling them, and I have a private list that I call, and I still do that, and the charge will be $13. We talked about $1,250, and that 50 cents will get lost somewhere. God forbid, we lose 50 cents. Women just don't do that. So we're going to go $13, and I hope it's okay, and I'm sorry, but it's better to get it here, $13, the kids will bring it, and you have a fundraiser. You don't get in the car, spend $4 to get there, pay 17, plus a 10. I don't charge you for the 10. And I'm not cheap. But that's my news, and I thank you very much, and I hope it brought everybody happiness.
Let me ask you a question if I may.
Oh, you buy pies? It's okay.
How do I get in that list? I want to be in the list, I want to be on the two, so I would like to get in.
You know, this stuff is on my list. How come?
I don't know. I want to be that list because I want to buy two.
I've got several, Mr. Sykes on my list. I think you're on our list. I think you did. I know you are, obviously. And you're on. Mr. Landera, does she have a senior? Does she already have a senior?
I think he crossed me off your list.
Nope. You have a senior? I have Landera's on, and we'll call it your senior.
I have a question. Where else could they, how can people order them if they don't know a senior?
I'm sorry, what?
Where else can we give them? How can the public give your pies if they don't, if they're connected with some high school?
She can't. Connected to a high school.
Why don't you give your phone number or I can see.
I'm going to make a suggestion, okay? Is that maybe you can put a sign-up sheet for pies at the senior center?
No, 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 I need, I do everything at the memorial building.
Okay. So do you have office hours?
We sold 1,335 pies.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to make it easy for you.
1,335 a year before, I need a lot of room.
Right, I'm talking about beforehand to order them.
Oh, before we order? I trust you. I need to.
Okay, I guess your phone number, your phone number is up on the screen, so.
Well, I have two for me, one my private. Three pies on this one, my private number.
I'm a two-pied man.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, my next speaker is Ms. Lynn Brooks. And then we'll move on to Ms. Catherine.
I don't need pies.
Ms. Catherine.
Okay, good morning. Good morning. It's time for me to close. Get up. Okay, it's Madam Mayor and Council. It's hard to follow, it's Janie boy, but if you want to know senior, my son. Okay. All right, we're here to give you an update, and it'll probably be the last one for this year because we're coming down to the end of our project with the palm trees. There is one phase left, of course, that is to replace it with some other type of tree. We have to make sure that this is organized and this part is done, phase one, then we'll be done with the other one to come. Hopefully, next year, we can get started on that. But this was quite, supposed to be a simple project undertaking, but it was not. First thing I'd like to do is, because there have been people questions asked of us in the past with regards to what does the Film Commission do, so I have our bios in front of me, so I'm just going to brief it over. There's a lot more to it, but I'm just going to brief it over to show the relevance of why we exist. And this is from February 2006. It's an update that the Film Commission's actually been in existence longer than that. I believe it's just an update to it. It is, establishment of Film or Film Commission, the members shall have an interest in promoting, encouraging, and assisting film activities within the city. Purpose and goals, do all of the following to promote, encourage filming in the city of Fillmore. In other words, recommend guidelines, permit procedures, promote filmmaking in the city of Fillmore, assist in promotional activities, recommend rules and procedures, communicate with the city council on issues related to the motion picture industry and activities of the commission. And so I'm here. And we've promised you to do it. Okay. The other thing is, designate merchant liaison to coordinate with city's film permit coordinator, which we do have, and we will be looking for a liaison soon. At the current time, it is 15 an hour, not next, another week, it's 50. So we will be doing that soon. And it states that also, we should develop an organized approach for attracting the film industry, ascertain community expectations, which goes to the survey we did, target area and market regional attributes, maintain a file of photos of potential shoot locations, which we do have on the website. Howard Miss House is working on one for homes. We're just now getting to the point where we have the abscess, I'll let her tell you in a second here. Provide input and suggest content for Film Commission webpage. So that is kind of what we do for all those that have been asking us individually, what does the Film Commission do, because many did not even know we existed, which is sad. One thing, a couple of things before we go on that I unfortunately have to mention, but then good news follows. Okay, a proposal was given to the chamber to assist us with this project, and it was approved, and we, myself and Ms. Jackson, who was the chamber president, came to you on July 10th to express that to you as part of the update, and was to, Film Chamber of Commerce agreed to split in half the total cost of the tree removal, which was $3,900. And they were to pay Arnold Salazar upfront, the $3,900, and the Film Commission would pay back its half of the $1,950 to the chamber with donations and from our budget, whatever we might have left from that. So again, it goes to, the city would not have bearing responsibilities to the cost. So I think we've kind of stuck to that. Unfortunately, things got, someone delivered a check from the chamber to the city for the $3,900, and that's what made you go into session and drop a warrant to Mr. Salazar. And I apologize for that. We did not foresee that coming. It was just a phone call that was made saying, "We're going to drop off the check, $3,900, and you city pay it," which then led to a bunch of things that needed to happen, legal counsel needed to get involved, and yet it was done. So I apologize and thank you very much for that. Okay, the good news, good news, very good news. Okay, we've already had three film permits since the trees have come down. Trees came down on the 20th of July, and we are now on the 25th of September, so within two months. And I gave you some figures. General fees that were collected from the mentalist, $4,030. Public safety fees, which would mean the fire safety officers, sheriffs, and all that, So that was a substantial amount. And then we had Mr. Michael Crawford, who is doing a film called The Road Trip, and he came, it just so happens, Tuesday after the trees were down and loved it, and decided to film here. So now, he is filming here, and after we film again, I believe, in a week. For that, total $2,400. Public safety fees, $4,500. Oh, well, here's the next one right here. I just got another email from Patrick, and he's our film permit coordinator. Mr. Crawford took out another permit. He's going to be filming more. And that's going to come out to $1,830. Public safety fees, $1,650. We have already surpassed, in two months, what we did in one year last year. I'm really happy to give this update. And again, it will be the last one until we can figure out how we're going to go about placing the trees, but I personally am ecstatic, and what the location scouts were saying apparently were true, and there are many that are very happy to come to our town now and film. So with that said, I'm going to allow Carrie to mention, somebody that approached her at her house, she's Film Commission, but they approached her, so you might want to tell us.
Yes, and this confirms that our scouts scout in Fillmore. We were home on Saturday afternoon, and a scout knocked on our door and inquired about our interest in using, allowing them to use our house to film a Jeep commercial. We were ecstatic. He came in to photograph inside, outside, went to ask our neighbors down the street, and then he followed us yesterday with eight other people at the home. Nothing confirmed yet, but he had two producers and a lawyer, and just locked up 50, and it was, we were just thrilled. So, you know, as I said, our scouts scout in Fillmore, and, you know, he had one knock on my door.
That's going to be a pretty big production, because I spoke to them this afternoon, and they want to do downtown as well. They want to close all of, right.
So this is, is it?
No, no, Jeep, the Jeep.
Oh, okay.
And then they also want to do a night shoot, so they want to close Central Avenue, downtown. So it's really, you guys did a good job.
Thank you very much.
And if I add to, you know, this gentleman on Saturday, the first scout that approached us, he was on my doors at two minutes, maybe, and he brought his palm trees on his own. I didn't say anything. He brought it up and said, "I'd love that you took down his palm trees." So.
Thank you to the commission. Thank you to the entire Film Commission. You guys have been very proactive, and I had a great time being at the commission. So again, great job. We owe a lot of thanks and good ones to all five of you. Thank you.
You want to tell about Facebook?
Yeah, something else we added is a Facebook site. It's just recently up and ready. We don't have a whole lot on there yet, but we have some ideas, further pictures, and things that we want to incorporate into it, but it's just another means by which the public can access what's going on in Fillmore and the way of filming.
And I'm going to have Pat say real quick what she's doing with regards to homes and putting those on the web as well.
Obviously, you know that we've been working with the merchants in the downtown area since we started. Now, we're trying to help the residents. We're trying to put together a listing of those residents who would like to make the homes available for filming. And to descend, we're going to have an ad, and we do have an ad on Channel 10, giving them my contact information. And we're also going to the next round of Water Bills that go out. We're going to have little boys say, "If you would like to consider filming at your home, please contact." So we're trying to help the residents as well if they wish to get involved. Great?
I, you know, this is definitely great. I appreciate that. So the residents will receive some money for doing that?
Yes, the, whatever, it's negotiation between the scouts and the film company and the residents. I mean, if they don't, if they don't get paid, they don't do it. I mean, it's.
So the merchants as well, they receive money for filming in front of their place?
Oh, yes. That's my, that's my.
Okay, that's completely separate.
Absolutely, that's directly between the film company and the merchant.
So the city is getting a big benefit, somehow a benefit in such a short period of time. The merchants are getting benefit, and possibly the individuals, different homes also will get some financial benefit. And this day, and everything is a time. I am so glad you're saying that, because I received emails saying that if I was willing to sell my wife and my kids. Basically, profit to them. And so I'm so glad that.
We are getting vast negotiations.
It was so, it's so good, but this is good, because this is the city itself, and not just the city as a building, as a management, but also the individuals are getting paid on that, and that is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, last thing to leave, thank you very much, Julie, for your support.
Great Film Commission, sir.
That's a great Film Commission statement. I still have four speaker cards. Ms. Rose Zellmer?
My name is Rose Zellmer. And I, you probably remember me, because I was here a while back. It was an issue. And I think the reason I'm concerned about it is because I feel like there's like a stalemate. And all the things that went on with that, there was lots of ugly things said, things done, you know, little things that kind of changed the whole agenda that were not right. I won't mention names, that actually made things like worse. And I got real upset, and I felt like I don't have any proof that I do feel like I was harassed. And I wanna see this community work together as a bunch of people. Like what everybody said, the film people are saying they're gonna help the community and everything. Communities are like families. If one person hurts somebody, it's gonna affect, it's like a ripple effect. Everybody's gonna get hurt. Everybody's gonna get affected. And I just feel like I'm part of this community, and I don't like seeing what people are saying, people are doing, just to get what they want, unlike what they wanna get through the voting stuff. Hurting people's feelings, doing little cards, you know, saying stuff that you don't even know is true. When my kids were growing up, and they would go out there, and these kids were bullying, I said, "You know the reason people bully you is because it makes them feel better. So it lifts them up. And if we bring people down, that's like bringing us down. And we're only making ourselves look better, and we're hurting the community." So I think we need to stop this insulting people, maligning people on paper. I don't like to mention names, because I don't have proof. I just have little chit chat, like gossip. Gossip is like a ripple effect. It starts little, and it just spreads, and then it affects people. So I think we, as a community, need to work together and stop all this and all the hurt that people haven't looked in on me and other people that I care about. People that are running, are being offended and hurt, and I don't like it. And I think we need to stop it. We're adults. Let's act like adults. Thank you.
All right. I have one more speaker card. Mary Creel. Good evening.
My name is Gary Creel. I own a building 330 Central Avenue. I do feel I have the right to approach the City Council, even though I live a mile and a half out of town. I've been doing a lot of walking the last couple of weeks and talking to a lot of friends, old friends. My gosh, you know, Fillmore's changing. I guess I'm getting older, Raylene.
Yeah, we are.
I mean, Raylene is Fillmore. You gotta love Raylene. I love Raylene. She doesn't like me right now, she told me, but I still love her. Anyway, I'm talking to people. And the number one thing in their mind is their pocketbook. And the pocketbook is being hurt. The number one thing that hurts that pocketbook is our sewer plant. It's killing them. I talked to a gentleman that I've known a long time, Mr. Mesa at La Unica. I don't know if you folks have been at the little convenience store on Telegraph. He's been there, he's been in town 48 years. He's got a big family here in town. And the man is working seven days a week. He has to lay off employees so that he can pay over $1,500 a month for the sewer bill and water bill. That little tiny place you drive by to take a shortcut to go to Ventura when you go on a weekend, instead of going out to the highway, that little place, La Unica, it's a nice little place. Great burritos, by the way. Yes, Steve, I do indulge too. He's hurting. And I've talked to other people, and have you noticed how many of your neighbors aren't watering their lawn anymore? Can't afford it. With the price of gas and everything. And the only one sitting up there on that dais tonight is Steve Conaway, who's responsible for that plant. He went to Washington DC with American Water and sat up on that dais in Washington DC telling everybody how much Fillmore is gonna enjoy this water plant. That happens to be a fact, Steve. We have your picture. So I'm not here to browbeat anybody. I appreciate the apology, Martin. I won't go into the details of the fistfight, because unlike other council persons, I don't divulge what goes on in close sessions. It's been 25 years, and I won't divulge. Because I promised I wouldn't. Community, I got this whole thing too. Everybody got this in town today. It's, you know, this costs about $2,200 to mail? $2,200 bucks. It's tough getting people to donate $10 this year for a campaign. And I can understand why. They don't have the money. This was $2,200. Now, that little telephonic survey, I'm guessing that was $3,000 at least. Where's Roger Campbell getting the money? Where's Roger Campbell getting the money? I don't know. I wish I did. I will find out. But, and I don't know these gentlemen that are running. I've never spoken to them. They could be the finest people in the world. I don't know. They may be... I'm not gonna say one thing derogatory about them, because I don't know them. But I know, I know you folks up there, and I trust you. And I know you do the right thing. None of you four have ever had your hand out for anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on an item? I have another speaker coming forward. Mr. Patty Wood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor of Town Council. I want to congratulate the city for prevailing in the city of the, excuse me, Eldorado Park versus the City of Fillmore. All the council members, the city attorney, myself, and former council member Lori Hernandez in front of court. And just keep seconding to them, guys. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Then we're ready to move on. So... Very lively public comment session. Our next item is the consent calendar. And... I think I wanna pull one. Well, yeah, let's pull that. I wanna... So other than that, do I have...
I move to approve with the claim, this question is I need to...
A motion?
Sir.
A motion in a second. This is a voice vote, Congressman Conley.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. This I need is approval of refund of the Kinright family when the partnership of DIFs paid for 870 and 880 Central Avenue that have not been expended. And the family is due a refund. And we're prepared to pay. And I have, I have some concerns about this. And that's because the project did not go forward. There were DIF payments made of $40,000, in excess of $40,000. And it's my understanding that, you know, once DIFs are deposited, we had to spend them on some capital projects. So now there's not the money to pay that back. And I feel a little guilty because of this is money that the city doesn't have, that some of it needs to be paid back. But still, I feel personally that these individuals paid for DIFs and didn't receive anything in return, or didn't move forward with their project that they should deserve more than $2,000 in return. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it. I, I am open to suggestions or motions. But I would suggest that the council consider some further compromise worth $2,000. So that's my statement.
For background, March 17th, 2005, Kinright is doing approval on the plan. Information is subject by the law and construct two residential buildings. And the project was approved construction, and the development impact fees were paid February 9th, 2006. This is how pullback shows. Film permits were issued, and they expired on September 3rd, 2006, without any work being done. The development impact fee paid to the city, as required by our municipal code, Research was conducted on the development impact fee that was paid by Mr. Wright, and it was determined that $45,625.90 has been spent by the city on capital projects. In other words, they were intending to build, and so they paid impact fees that, and so the city did improvements in capital projects. But it left a balance of $3,300. The development impact fees that Mr. Wright paid were used to help cover the expenditures of capital projects for fire, transportation, park, water, sewer, storm drain projects that have appeared since 2006. So funds were put in, like all other impact fees, and they were distributed to the running of the city. The fact is, they did not feel it. I, I can see that it's expensive. It seems a shame they didn't get returned on their investment. But I think the city's already spent the money. We don't have that extra cash to pay back. And they paid it with the idea that they're going to build. It's a risk if someone does that. And you're paying back what hasn't been spent. You know, and I think, therefore, I'm gonna recommend the recommended action by our staff to pay back the $3,304.14 that is in the motion. We can discuss it after.
Okay. And thanks for that explanation to everybody. Is there any other comments or discussion on the side? There was a motion on the table?
Yeah, just clarification. Isn't that lot to lot, did they split and they built the one house in the back of the lot and not the house in the front? It's three horse up from you, Jamie. Right up there?
I'm at eight from you.
And, well, this is 870.
I believe it's a total... 788.
Three, it's three horse up from you.
Yeah. I don't think they built anything. I think there was a structure already.
I think it's a total of three lots. They, they built the lot, they built the home at the very end of the lot, and then they sold the two front ones. And I believe that the rights are the ones that we're talking about, the two front lots that I did. So I think that little back house is separate.
Yeah.
They built the one, it's a separate parcel in the two front lots, for the rights. And that's my understanding.
Excuse me, is that property now in the 500 feet of your home?
Yeah.
Then... You grow your home, you get your...
I'll throw them in.
If you actually, if you could announce the conflict and confuse yourselves with the neighbors.
I just figured out, Steve told me that this is two lots down from me, which is close to my house. So I, I'm not gonna vote on this.
Thank you, City Attorney. Okay, any more discussion or any motions? Don't wait, Tom.
I would like to have a little more discussion. They, under this fees, they also build the house in the back? Doesn't matter at all?
No, it was my understanding, and Steve sort of gave me a nod. Maybe he can clarify a little bit, but it's hard to say that they split the lots in half. In other words, the house that is presently there is separate from the two lots over in front. So the rights put in the DIF fees to the two lots in the front separately, different owner from the back. They just have an easement to be able to drive to that back home.
And they were planning to obviously build now, because they sold the property.
Steve did comment on that. Steve, you guys hold on a second.
Yeah, I can see, manager, is absolutely correct. There's two lots that film permits were issued on. No activity occurred. Those permits expired. And before we issued those permits, the applicant must pay the development. All right. I don't leave close to 870 and 880 Central Avenue. So therefore, I'm making a motion to refund to them the $3,304.14.
Sir.
All right, I have a motion in a second. And can we do a voice vote? Congressman Conley?
Aye.
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 No. Okay, motion passes. Can somebody call Mr. Rose back in the room? Ray? Somebody can come in? Okay. I'm gonna move on to item 8A. Is that finance item?
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself on those two items. There may be a conflict of interest. I have no business in these transactions, but it's just being clear. I'll be a part of this decision process.
All right. I have another accusation. I'm so sorry for that. All right, item 8A. This is a reconsideration, a new finance foundation deal. And the subcommittee previously met on this. Did you want, have any comments?
Well, actually, yeah, after some certification of different agreements that we have had with this, just bring up right now to the council as a whole to approve this.
So the finance committee is suggesting approval of...
The recommendation was to approve.
Which one? A?
Actually, A and B. They're the two in second. The recommendation was to approve.
On what basis?
Just the basis of the agreements.
Meaning that the payments, their payments are pre-made?
Is the staff, are we gonna report on this in the parameters of the program?
Is the staff member going to report on this in the parameters of the program? We just gonna have?
Well.
Oh.
I think we can request staff to take your report to us. You saw there. What may I, what I'd add is that we took a long consideration of this, of this process, and we feel that definitely, especially after taking legal advice.
The item A, which is the item that we're addressing right now, is the request for refinance and subordination, uh, for six thirty-eight Elkins Lane. And the provisions of their down payment assistance program was that it would lower their interest rates and lower their total housing cost. And since, um, this meets that criteria, um, staff's recommendation alone, would, would have to be is to approve.
So, but you're increasing the amount of, uh, of the debtiness?
Correct. At the time, at the time these were approved, the only provision in refinance was that it would lower their interest rate or lower their overall housing cost. And, um, this lowers their interest rate and, um...
So it meets, it meets the criteria of the agreement we have with, with this as first time home buyers?
Correct. It's the down payment assistance program. These were originally done in nineteen ninety-five.
Right, so my next question is if they would default, there's enough equity to cover our investment?
Yes, we, we contacted on this first one. Uh, we contacted the mortgage company, and the appraisal brings it in at much higher than what they're actually going to owe between the first and the second.
I think it's worthwhile to note that over the life of the first time home buyer program, we've had three revisions to the program. And I think the nineteen ninety-five vintage are the ones that are, um, the widest open for refiing. And when Ted Schneider, our former City Attorney, we've restricted that now so you can no longer add principal back, and you have to lower. But based on the vintage of these, uh, the rules state that they are lowering their interest rate as an example, which, um, I'll just talk about eight A since that's one important element. In that case, they are doing that.
Correct.
Yeah, the nineteen ninety-five agreement is a little more restricted against these, I'm writing a word.
Okay.
So you want to put that in a form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to, um, to override the City Manager. To order, does he need to take an anxiety action regarding the City Council decision, subordination agreement? And approve the recommendation under financial measure for six thirty-eight Elkins Lane? And authorize the City Manager, Acting City Manager, to take all these actions related to the execution and the order of the subordination agreement?
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. This is a voice vote. Councilman Conley?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
I'm going to have a second. All right, we're going to move on to item B, which is similar, same circumstances, same recommendation.
I will make the same motion, um, that I read before, but to repeat it a little bit. This is for four one nine, right over to me. Because we take the same time as if we could.
Okay, I have a motion.
Also, I could add with clarity, um, in this one, they're actually reducing their total monthly payment and interest rate. So two ways to the school are being met on this one.
And for clarification for discussion, as the finance worker said, there's equity in this piece of property too, enough to?
Protect cities.
Protect the city investment.
Correct. Um, this one, we actually do have a copy of their appraisal. So we actually have the physical evidence. The other one, we got ultimately from the, the mortgage, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Does I have a motion on the table?
Aye.
Oh, you have a second, I'm sorry. Voice vote, Councilman Conley?
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
I have a second. All right. And next, we're going to move on to, oh, here it comes. All right, we're going to move on to item eight C. And this is discussion and adoption of proposed twenty thirteen City Council meeting schedule and direction to staff on the town hall meeting format presented by the City Man, Acting City Manager.
I want to move to approve.
Um, I think there's supposed to be some discussion on town hall meeting format.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you see on your staff report, there is a timeline, dates of proposed regular meetings. And as you can see on January twenty-second, that is designated for a town hall meeting type of a hall meeting.
Okay, let's have a good schedule. Um, now, Brian, I know you're the proponent for our town hall meeting. So do you mind, like, suggesting something for that?
First, I have a question. Uh, my memory can't certainly well during, um, our first, um, meeting. Was it a separate meeting or did it be, um, correlated to be with a, just a general meeting?
Yeah, what, what we try to accomplish is that we try to agendaize a number of items that we want to look at and discuss. And then we curtail the amount of business meeting that we're going to put on the agenda. So in other words, we were just going to dedicate more time to what the issues of, we got a general consensus of what issues we were going to be talking about so we can add that onto the agenda. And then to put the city business up either before that meeting or after so we can just concentrate on the actual town hall meeting.
How can you make a suggestion that we only put consent items as business items? Items that need, are time sensitive? And then we dedicate the rest of it to the, um, town hall structure? Otherwise, you could be here to, you know. The point is, if you're going to concentrate on feedback from the public, you need, you need to give the lion's share of the time to your town hall. But there may be things we need to, uh, approve.
And, and what we'll do is, as the time gets closer, we'll put a agenda, a, uh, together for you. And, uh, you know, obviously, uh, Councilman Brooks is correct. We will have to have, uh, you know, time sensitive issues on there. But other than that, we'll, we'll dedicate it to a town hall.
And I, I do ask kindly that we give the public ample notice on this, uh, putting it on channel ten, I know we will, as we did last year, of kiosks. Um, perhaps the water bills could have a little, or bubble, you know, with that. And also the, uh, the, you know, rules of conduct, that needs to be discussed as well. I do, I do recall last, the last town hall was, was done professionally and respectfully. I assume it will be conducted the same way, but I, I think that's always something to precaution out.
Yeah, and then before we actually put this together, I'll give you a copy to our, uh, City Attorney, you know, to take a look at that and make sure that we're right, definitely right.
Very gentlemanly report.
Okay, um, I, I would like to ask Ms. Israel. I want to surprise you or anything, I knew you weren't prepared to speak on this, but can you give us any, um, feedback about town hall meetings that you had in other cities that you represented? Um, is there any good formats that you have found that work?
As was mentioned, you list general broad topic, so it would allow broad conversation, but focused on topics that you'd like to have meaningful discussion on. I think that's the most successful thing. And also, if you try to limit it to maybe two or three, or maybe even just one, depending on how sensitive the conversation might be. If you, you know, have buyer six topic, it might be underweight. But, uh, usually, um, they're met with great success with residents. You feel like there's really opportunity to hear and have a conversation.
All right, so do you feel like you have that direction to move forward with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Do we have to come on with a, a calendar?
So yes.
Okay, I move that, um, we adopt the proposed two thousand and thirteen City Council meeting schedule.
A motion?
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor of adopting the twenty thirteen calendar. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, my next item is eight D. And this is approval of a letter to Ventura County Transportation Commission requesting reconsideration of its decision to divest itself of administration of the Vista Route one twenty-six bus service in the Fillmore and Santa Paula dial ride. Jamie, did you, I want to talk about?
Sure, did you want to say anything, uh, that, I know you talked to, um, oh, to then I'll, then I'll add, then I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, I talked to the dial ride, uh, which is, uh, Vista?
Mm-hmm.
Or, uh, is it?
It's Vista.
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 And, uh, and the, the nuts and bolts behind it is that we're trying to keep the dial ride and the one twenty-six Vista route between Fillmore and Santa Paula alive. Um, there is some, uh, rumbling that that particular service may be going away if we don't support, um, or endorse this letter so we can send this to VCTC. Is that how it comes?
Yeah, VCTC, yes.
Yeah, so, um, that's pretty much what, what, um...
So, um, VCTC is the Ventura County Transportation Commission. And I think they would like to get out of the, um, transportation, moving people business and only be in the planning portion of it. But they're actually administering, um, the one twenty-six, you know, the Vista buses is actually administered by the Ventura County Transportation Commission. And dial ride in Fillmore, Fillmore and dial ride in Santa Paula are part of that system. At the moment, Gold Coast Transit, which, uh, does a good job in Oxnard, Ventura, and Port One Nene, and Ojai, is looking to consolidate, uh, and, and asking Fillmore if we would consider consolidating with them. And as a member of the VCTC Commission, I've attended a number of their workshops, uh, and I stressed that Fillmore is really happy with their dial ride. And, and, and one problematic issue is that, uh, their system has, um, high price, because it's unionized, um, drivers. And, and we're not real sure that Fillmore can afford to pay the type, the rates and that would, that would be incurred if we were consolidated with Gold Coast Transit. However, we're talking to them about that with the idea that we keep dial ride. They would slough out to us dial ride and would function the way that it's always functioned in Fillmore and, and Santa Paula until there was a better, uh, a better opportunity to it in a, in a, in that way. So what we're trying to do is we're writing a letter to the President of the Ventura County Transportation, uh, Commission and every member, a son of a coffee of the letter to say, we would be interested in their ideas of consolidation, because the county is pushing that, the commission's pushing that, but we want to preserve dial ride. And also, Fillmore and Santa Paula have, have, we have the highest ridership anywhere else in the county. Okay? And, and dial ride is one of the most efficient in terms of ridership and price and moving people from one place to another. It's one of the most efficient, um, workings of transportation in the state, okay? And, uh, especially in a rural setting. And so we have all this going for us. So what we're joining, what I'm asking as a commissioner to this council is to agree with the letter to join with Santa Paula to tell the Ventura County Transportation Commission that we are very concerned about preserving dial ride. And, and, uh, yes, we would be interested in their big plans, but, but we cannot lose that ridership. We, we cannot lose that level of service. There's our people that have been funded to go to work, they have been funded to go to school, they have been funded to go to the doctor and, and, and hospitals and, uh, and get around town. We don't have a, we don't have a taxi system. We have dial ride, and it works. So what this letter basically says is, it's not broke, please don't fix it. Otherwise, it works. And so if, if we're going to move forward and be discussing with you, uh, coming together as one unit, then you need to have in writing that you recognize that dial ride is very important to both Santa Paula and Fillmore. We're writing for Fillmore, and Santa Paula's putting out a, a letter like this.
Okay, I'm in support of your argument.
Do you make enough of a motion?
Mayor, if I may, just real quick, while I support sending the letter and advocating on behalf of the riders, um, only to be fair, reasons that VCTC is moving away from that, they cited four reasons, and that's, uh, Senate Phil seven sixteen mandating the Transportation Development Act monies be only used solely for transit. Uh, number two, completion of federal discretionary Vista carryover funds. Number three, adoption of regional transit plan. It, uh, transitions VCTC in operations as local transit operators. And four, bankruptcy of Coach USA. So, um, those are the reasons that they're moving away. But I support sending the letter and asking to reconsider. It's all valid. Does somebody have a second?
I'll take this motion.
I move that we, uh, send this letter to, uh, all the members of the VCTC.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Menace, I've had a request for a short recess break. So we're going to recess for five minutes. Okay, everybody, let's put this meeting back on track here. We're having, um, item, we just concluded item eight D. And, uh, I would like to ask the council before I forget, if we can move over to the, um, successor agency agenda. There's one list, and then on that agenda?
Do you agree with? Second.
I have a motion in the second, this is a voice vote, Councilman Conley?
Aye. Yes. Yes. Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the successor agency and move back to our council discussion of item eight D. This is discussion and possible council action concerning the reduction of paper used to disseminate City Council meeting agenda information. This was requested by Councilman Gonzalez. So we have a, a staff discussion, and Gonzalez just want to talk about here.
I, I, I do, I, I think that, um, the amount of paper that we received is huge. And, um, I believe there is a better way to do it. Now, before I move on, I, I am not suggesting, not even requesting for us to have computers in here, and to, for the city to buy computers, because I, I will start getting emails from, I mean, I was calling Netico last week, my, now with his computer, it's worse. When you turn around, it's all, you just want to have, run a new computer. I don't need a new computer. But I think that most of us may have tablets and, and laptops in our homes. Then we can have access to this information. Now, you do feel like bringing your computer is fine, so you go bring that into your own home. home, all the package, you can bring it in your home. I was talking to, to, um, um, legal counsels, it happened with you to post the, um, the agenda and, you know, one of the suggestions was, well, can we put one of these TVs that are over there, which I don't know what we use them for. We have actually one in front of it. And it says, at the time of the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, at the time of the meeting, we can post the whole agenda in there. That will be sufficient for the individuals that they want to see the agenda, am I correct?
In general, that's correct. I mean, there are some people who might still want to have particular items that they could bring in for reference when they're speaking at the stage, but I'm not sure how often that happens here. For, for most people who want to know what's on the agenda though, that would give them notice.
And, and most, um, I mean, the agenda is posted on our website to be, to be that standard as well. I believe that most people have access to the internet, have access to the agendas, and they can help print the agenda and all the documents that comes attached to the agenda. I, you know, this is an environmental thing perhaps, but mostly in my point of view is to save money. The amount of money that we print, because it's not just the paper, is the turner, is the, the staffing time, is the use of the copy machine and this new copy machine they charge you for the turner and the number of copies. Uh, you know, we can actually save, and I will say, consider, consider the amount of money if we can start utilizing, uh, um, digital documentation in our, for our agendas distribution. And if you want to print it, well, you just have a buddy map. Um, I think that, um, the, um, Laura does a great job and she emails me that and, you know, I have that. Again, I'm not asking for a computer for all of us, what I'm saying is that we can utilize that, that, um, digital documentation, which is secure and they move on there. And if you choose to print it, well, I'll be grateful. But the city will save tremendous amount of money in my point of view.
Laura, I'd just like to make a, a couple of quick comments. What I want to clarify on those televisions, those were purchased through a brand for our ELC. So as I was talking about earlier, in the, uh, when I was talking earlier, uh, in the event of a major emergency, those things will come in handy because we could set those portable televisions outside and disseminate the information we need to correctly to the public in a faster way. So, um, that's one of the brainstorms that Patrick Maynard, when he designed this ELC office, it was a tremendous idea and hats off to him for coming up with that. So, but to your point, we could use those to post that, that, that information.
But we have, we also have one over there on the outside.
Yeah, that's part of it.
You come during the week, uh, this is Channel 10 with all the information that we have in there. Well, we perhaps can, that one is large enough yet to do it, give it to feedback. And, uh, people can see the different agendas and they come in and see the whole agenda and, and going like. I think, I think that we can save tremendous amount of money.
And the other thing we really need to be careful about, um, and, uh, is the fact that we got to look at our, our demographics in the city. And some, some residents don't have that, you know, the luxury of having a home computer or something that they can, uh, look at to look at the agenda. So, uh, even though I think it's a great idea and I think we should, uh, try to be diligent about using those of us that have, you know, electronic devices to be able to look at the agenda, we still need to do some form of, uh, have a paper for those that don't, that don't have that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that Glenda Howard will send that, um, but especially the communication that we get sent. I mean, I, I totally know the, well, I have an idea, the amount of hours that Glenda has spent doing this, I would love to have this digital. I, I don't, because I will use it faster than trying to find a paper. And also, if there is an emergency or there is a situation that I, I don't have this with me, I will always have something that I can reach, whether it's here or someplace else, um, to be able to have that information. I mean, using the cloud is, is a, is something that we can use in this unexpressed. And, uh, and I believe at least we can start with ourselves, get the things emailed, see how can we do the, uh, the information, the printing board in front of us and, and do that. And I believe, and I don't have any numbers, Nora will request the financial department to make any numbers, but their reduction of paper must be used on paper. Among those other things that I also thought about this is encourage people to make their different payments to the city in turn. I mean, you go to the DMV and, you know, everything is electronic. You go, want to check your insurance, you do electronically. Um, yeah, you can go to DM, uh, DMV and waste six, seven hours in there, but we can always make payments through there and it's faster, it's secure, it's something that is today's technology. I would like to start with the city council, all the documentation that we obtained, try to use in a, in a, in a electronic format. You get it home, you print it, you want to print it, um, on your own dime. And, um, and then give you one, you're in your computer, you can utilize it.
I, I think that those are all good suggestions, Eduardo. At this point, I would say that, that would have to be optional and each council member would have to make their own choice on doing that. I think I would try it. I sit on the APCD with the county board of supervisors and when they have their meetings, I sit with them. And all the supervisors are all only using electronic devices at their meetings. And then there's also the issue of storage. I mean, I have a whole room in my house full of folders and, and agendas. And, uh, so just, just the filing is a room. But the budget, I don't know that I can, I'd have to have the budget in, in a book form. But I, I will try to do, uh, the agenda. I don't know if I'm going to have to get a, an iPad or something, but.
Mayor, I, just to echo that, I, my iPad, I did download the agenda and, um, it does help immensely. Um, I don't have it this evening because I wasn't able to go home for the meeting, but, it's more clear, it's more, um, in my case, it's more efficient. I plan to use it the next year, going further. So, um, but I do understand the demographics too of that may not have the capability of having such devices. So I think the, the optional choice is, uh, worth it.
Okay. So a lot of us just suggest that whoever wants to do that, contact Laura or the city manager and just request that you receive your, your agenda electronically. Or, and I think there's already, uh, a list of citizens that get their agenda electronically. And if there's anybody out there who wishes to receive the agenda, you just contact city hall and they'll email it to you when it comes out. Um, and then you may also get posted on the, on the internet right away. So I think that's the direction we want to go in as far as using technology to lower our costs and make things more convenient and faster. But people like, I, I love the idea of electronic payments. I think we talked about that a couple of years ago. But obviously that's going to take an investment and some staff time and money. So that would go on the back burner, but it's definitely something that I'm in support of is electronic payments for permit fees or water bills, whatever. So my suggestion is just contact, go to council and city citizens to contact staff and request your agenda electronically.
I have a, just a short, more comment is that I think we need to show some really leadership. I understand the demographics and that's a great point. You know, a small amount of things that we can print, it'll be, I mean, it will never be avoided. But maybe to be option means that there will be, you know, whatever, doing material in this paper, each one. I, I'm not saying that we need to obligate that, but, you know, making an effort is more than just gaining all the time in my point of view. And the effort needs to be pushed. We have wanted to save tremendous amount of money in Mr. Printers. And that looking just from the economic point of view, not in the, uh, ecological. Making, it is more than just making an effort, making all the time in my point of view, it is, we need to create a plan where we can get there. And that's why I was bringing it up, we need to make a plan where we can get there.
Well, I, I would agree with, with you as far as plan. We, a few years ago, we, we kind of moved in that direction as far as moving to hit Granicus, which is a, a system that you can buy to all your documents online, then the all the meetings and minutes are online, uh, easily accessible. That was going to be like $35,000 to implement. And so we didn't have the money to, to implement that. But that's, that's what it's going to take is some kind of a, a software or.
PDF, that's what we have. PDF, screen, you can upload it for free, as we've been doing it right now. That's what takes PDF. We don't have to be sophisticated, we just get what we're using.
Oh, we still have an obligation to the public. But you are, you have, uh, myself and Brian who are, they have said that we're going to try it, so.
I'm a dinosaur. I like paper, I read books. I do have a Kindle and I do read electronic books, so I will consider it. But I'm telling you, I'm a dinosaur, I'm, so I'm like transition slower.
What do you think, what about the suggestion of, of coming up with a plan, a transition plan? I know that's going to take some staff time.
I, I think you're already in place. You can, you're already receiving it through email right now, your plan is already in place. If people want it, they can have, uh, the agenda emailed to them. I think you have to have hard copies of, uh, sort of table contents outside.
Yeah, we have to.
You know, and, and, um, so I'll always want a hard copy of at least the table contents, you know, but, um, I, I would have to go investigate into the best way to, I do have a laptop, but I don't really have a laptop here. I, I move slower on the tech, 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 you know, and then say.
But you can, you can make. Laura, you could, can we at least create a small committee that can work into this and create a plan? How will we rule it to lead it? Is not going to take this much one time? Like we have the technology in here today to do it, I was like, I am doing it, so we have the technology. Can we at least consider that?
I think we could consider pulling the subcommittee, although we already have the subcommittee for the shopping prices. You need to get that going too. But I'll certainly put it on my list, like some committees too. Okay, any further discussion? I, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Eduardo, and I think we will continue to take steps in this direction. Okay. Now we're going to move on to item F, which is discussion and possible council action concerning a citizen and elected official committee regarding budget concerns. And I can't remember if Councilman Sykes requested this. This goes back to, um, my long ago dream of a budget task force. And, uh, I will say that this is something that I've wanted for a long time. Uh, I think it would be great to have, I would say 10, 10 people on a, on a budget task force composed of citizens and chamber members and council members and staff. And the reason I was never able to move that forward is because of our staffing levels. We don't have the staff in place to, um, to coordinate and to, to run such a group. So I'm just putting that out there. That's, that was the concern a couple of years ago when I tried to move this forward and I think it's a concern that's still there, in fact, maybe even worse. So those are my comments.
I, I do feel that it's, it's, it should be mandatory to our, our body. Um, there's been a lot of questions, um, about the budget, especially the cuts, misconceptions. And I, I feel that the community is more involved within the budget and looking at areas that they have ideas that should be cut or should not be cut or, um, things that are relevant. I think we need to have their own book. I think a portion of it could be, um, used for the town hall where we could hopefully advocate individuals coming forward and saying, please, we want to hear your thoughts on this budget, that's going to be coming up, we need, we need, uh, community output, so, and that's, that's where I stand. I, I, I felt, you know, being voted on the budget, it was, it was quick, um, no one wanted to do it. But the questions I continue to have is what areas do you want to cut? You want to cut services, recreation, or public safety, or staff? Where else are you going to cut? Huge question.
I, um, but how would the citizen, would we choose? Um, that's, that's part of my, my questions of that because, you know, if we choose citizen A, oh, because he likes me. And citizen B, oh, because he likes me because I, you know, I'm not as hard because I.
I think we could go through an application process just like we do with any other boards or commissions or committees.
Part of my, my thought was asking the Chamber of Commerce, asking a few service clubs who have, um, ties to the business community to be involved. And then have a portion of that community, um, be aligned with just average Joe coming in and wanting to, you know, put some service time and help make our community better. You know, there's, was a lot of talk this evening about, you know, we all have to come together or we're going to succeed. And this is, this is a way to do it, especially during difficult times.
I agree. And, you know, the more citizen involvement, the better as far as I'm concerned. However, I will say that, um, at our last, we have adopted our last budget, we have four budget workshops. That's, that's unprecedented. And we, and now we post the draft of budget online, that was never done before. So there's more opportunity for input and analysis, um, from citizens than there ever has been. And, um, I think the people that, that want to talk and be engaged in the budget process, they're, they're here. They could, we had a lot of public comment during the budget process. But again, my concern is we don't, we're going to be losing our finance director, who's going to be sitting with that budget task force if we have to recruit, train a new finance director? So those are my concerns, we just don't have the staff to put it together right now.
I'm cognizant of these challenges that are ahead. I think, you know, yes, we have strived to be more open, transparent, because the budget has not been online, um, with any other administration. So that is a reflection, but it's not somewhere where we stop and say, that's enough, we need to continue and proceed ahead. So I think there's other ways to do it. I understand the staff, staffing issue. I, I do think that there's a lot in the community that are willing to come together and work on this mission.
Yeah, but we have to have staff available to produce all the paperwork and consent with those, with those, uh, test, with the individuals in the council.
How about we, uh, make a foot note for, uh, the public, saying that we actually do value this and that we, this is a toll. To actually have a citizen, official, official citizen council committee regarding budget concerns, uh, realizing too, we're in a valley of transition. And, and, but, um, we'll put an asterisk by it and say this is something that needs to be revisited, uh, in late spring. And by then, we won't have a lot of transition worked out.
I think that's a good idea. Can you support that again, Fred? Can you support that again, Brian?
I could support it. I do feel that we need to be proactive on going back to the town hall. While that subject's already discussed, I think it should be put on as a topic, and it should be taught of, at least facilitating some sort of way to bring individuals in the community who may have solutions and ideas, so we can look at those and we're more open. And I think it's, it's a good thing.
I think we are, you can all agree...
You're right. It's stepping soon, however, I want us to step to the bold. So it's not, this issue's not, it's not ended, so, but yes, that's, that's a mini step.
Okay.
I have a million... Mayor? I fully support the suggestions that came from Joan Archer and some of the other citizens to form a committee like this. And I acknowledge that we are in transition. But we can still embrace the concept in bringing in citizens who have a desire to serve the community and to provide input and different eyes on the budget. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We have an application process. They develop an application, selection committee can run through the applications, bring back, you know, a number of six to eight people from the committee. And by the time we get that all done, then there'll be a new council, and they'll make the decision of how they're going to go forward and meet with this group. Now's a perfect time, tonight, we just got our adopted budget printed, and it's on the dais. So the sooner we start soliciting input, the better off we'll be. So I think it's great, and I think we should move forward.
I would like to add to that, that at one point, General Honor of February, we're going to have a mid-year budget. And we have a committee already in place, and we can review the budget with this, with this initiative, with this committee. And we can review what is in there, what we need to be doing, and giving the suggestions and everything. I totally support this idea, I think it's very good.
I'd like to hear from staff, either Captain City Manager Landeros or Linda J on the possibility of being able to do that. Is it doable, or is this something that, is there a better time? What are your thoughts?
Just give us directions and give us a direction, we'll make it happen. But Linda, I can tell you this, Linda has her hands full with Redmond stuff up for her second departure, so. It's bottom line is...
Bottom line is there...
You tell me to do it, we'll figure out a way to do it.
There won't be any finance personnel?
But going through, just the application process is going to take a period of time, so, you know, why not start it now? Why not get a move on?
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
We, just give directions to staff to start an application, put out an advertisement or whatever.
Right, there's some... But, I mean, do you want to give more direction about what the people are, like the number of people, and the outreach structure, things like that?
My idea was ten individuals, and ten individuals, yes. As to the breakup of the membership, that is unwilling to hear from other council members at a future date. I know we're getting more and more depth on that. But I would like to have a section of the fee of community service clubs, like the chamber, the Rotary, possibly the representative from the Lions, I think that should be all entertained.
Do you mind, I think what I'll do is this, is I will, I'll put, you know, we will, staff will put together the outline of what we're going to do, we'll get the application, what it's going to look like, staff, I think we already have that, Steve says, we don't have to read it, we won't have one. We'll put the logistics together on what club organizations we want to reach out to in the total amount, and how we're going to advertise this, and then we'll bring it back to you. I'll bet.
My thought is, in theory, we're going to have ten people, and one, at least one to two, we can only have two council members, one staff member, we have a chamber person and a Rotary person, that's five, so that leaves five citizens at large. So is that five at large citizens, is that a good number?
Yes, that's, that was my...
Okay, so two council members, one staff member, two service club members, and five citizens at large. That, that, yes, that's mine.
Just to add more clarity, I see the role of this as a non-binding advisory committee, just officially to get a standard.
I would, I would add to that, you should make a tip for it. You know, we're not establishing necessarily a, you know, like the planning committee, we're not establishing a commission, we're establishing a committee, which is different, which deals with whether that's binding or non-binding too.
I mean, we need to also, at one point, to discuss for how long this committee will be serving, and when the new process of getting new people in that committee will be applied. So there's a lot of, I think that the idea is great, and I think the way to sand all the corners to be sure that everything's in place before we actually go and put applications forward.
I think it, two years, one or two years for, for appointment, is that sound reasonable? Two years?
Maybe.
No, I think it takes a long time to get up to speed on this, but it's a steep learning curve. So, you know, if you just have somebody serve for a year, they, they get in there and just get into it, and then they, the learning curve has to start again, so maybe two to three years, I think that makes sense.
Maybe we can actually, as Mr. Landeros mentioned, maybe put together a structure for it. You can also look at other cities and see what they have.
Oh, actually, I do have some documentation.
Okay, and then come back and actually have a more detailed discussion of the parameters of it.
Oh, that sounds fun. And I'll send you the documentation that I have for you, because I did start...
One more thing that I think that we also need to be clear is that this is, and I think, Steve said, this is an advisory board, that the board not necessarily is going to be making any decisions. But we need to hear what, what the ideas are, because among all of us, we have all the solutions, not just five of us. So I like the idea, but we need to, I think that before we move into anything else, I would like to see the plan, I would like to see it written, be able to read it, and be able to see how the whole thing will operate before we actually move on to something else.
Okay. Seven questions? All right. Move on to, next item is G, this is Discussion and Possible Council Action Concerning the City Manager Recruitment Process. And I will say, as I mentioned earlier, when we came out of closed session, we have appointed Mr. Landeros as the acting city manager. And then moving forward, staff in the council are going to be looking at options for recruiting an interim certain city manager. So that's the next step. So I just wanted to put that out there. Is there anything else anybody wanted to add? We do have a speaker card, I'm sorry. Anything else? Okay. Rick Neil?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'll keep this short, I'm getting late. I'm Rick Neil, 424 Saratoga Street, local business owner, candidate for City Council, Fillmore native, and a community volunteer. I've been out, without talking to people, and they are sharing some concerns with me regarding the process that's going to be used to hire a new city manager. So I wanted to share that with you, and hope you guys would encourage you to listen to these concerns. The first one is, people are asking you guys to consider someone who's worked in a small town similar to Fillmore before, somebody who's, who values our unique charm, someone who's approachable, someone who will interact, who will interact with the community, both socially and professionally, someone who will hold themselves to the highest standards and hold their staff to the same standards, someone who's capable of training staff members and working with their staff and bringing them up to speed on things, and someone who will lead by example. So these guidelines seem very reasonable and applicable to you. I'm sure you guys agree. So that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item, before we move forward? Okay. Next is item H, and this is Consideration of Sample Codes of Conduct and Ethics, Information and Provide Directions to Staff as appropriate. I'll leave it down here. This was signed by Miss Perry, so I'll just go ahead and proceed. We requested this, there's, since I've been on the council, there's been a lot of strange things that have happened. And as many people have talked about this evening, there's, there's a lot of uncalled-for division and even hatred, seems like to me sometimes. And that's, that's so unnecessary and so uncalled-for in our community. The council, I believe, has a high standard of conduct to project out to the community, high standard of ethics. At this point in time, we don't have a written policy on ethics or conduct. We did have a few years ago, and it had been abused or used in an improper fashion, I think, to censor a former council person. So I just want everybody to know what the rules are, everybody here at the dais, any possible future candidates. I think we need to discuss what's expected of our behavior at the dais and on in the public. So that's why this is here. I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about it, there are some samples that staff has provided, and I wanted to read a couple, I don't know if I'm going to be able to, I think I brought my classes. But there's, you know, there's some things that council people show. Conduct of members, here's what I can read. The professional, and this is on page fifty-eight of the agenda, conduct of members, the professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach, and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the council, boards, and commissions, the staff, or public. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, that I've been personally attacked by other council members. I, I think that's wrong. We've heard from some people about bullying tonight. I don't think anybody, I don't ever want to see anybody on this dais bullying another council member or in the public. So that's, that's the way I feel about it. Also, here's one, respect for process. Members shall perform their duties in accordance with the process and rules and order established by the council governing deliberation of policy, meaningful involvement of the public, implementation of policy decisions. That's not too long, I think we can all do that. Refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments, not to main to the business of the body. There's pages and pages of different confidential information about employees and property or affairs of the city. We'll be discussing another agenda item, that kind of thing, but I just want everybody to respect, being on the city council, respect your fellow council members and staff and the public, and entertaining the other comments from anybody else, any thoughts, as far as putting any, putting anything down on paper. Do we, do we want to put something down on paper, or do we want to trust that everybody on this body will conduct themselves with ethics and professionalism at all times? Can we do that? Can we trust to be, be trusted to do that without having to put it down on paper? And if the answer is yes, we all trust that we'll conduct ourselves professionally, let's say, let's move on. And if the thought is that, no, we cannot be trusted, some of us cannot be trusted to act like that, then we have to consider other alternatives.
Mayor of MA, since I was under the request of the Code of Ethics, we put on the agenda tonight, I'd like to address that a little bit. The last page of this, the agenda item, page one oh five, you will see that in April eighth, two thousand and eight, the city council repealed its Code of Ethics, and I was alone named vote to do so. The rest of the council thought it was room to repeal the Code of Ethics. I've brought it up several times since then, and I truly believe that if we're going to say we have those values, that we as council members should have a Code of Ethics, that we put our name to and try to adhere to. I think we're probably the only city in Ventura County that does not have a current Code of Ethics. And I believe it is important, it is a nice guiding document, and of course, we hope for the best of behavior, rather than examples that you were highlighted on earlier. I think the Code of Ethics reassures the public of behavior that its council and elected officials are working to strive to live by. So I still support a Code of Ethics. I know there's differing opinions on the dais tonight, and feel differently. I've read samples from Sunnyvale and Denisa and San Jose, and quite frankly, at this point in time, we can take any of those and put our name on it, and that'd be an improvement from what we have. However, I will object to the sample from the city of Toronto, Canada. I'm not sure why that, in our package, I don't think we need to...
I knew you really did that.
I don't think we need to go to another country to look at their sample Code of Ethics. Oh, it's nice that they have one, and, you know, let's leave it at that. So we do have examples, we have two examples of Fillmore's last Code of Ethics, and it was set to be revised, and the original Code of Ethics back in two thousand and three. So I'll open it up for discussion, or leave it for discussion. I'm supportive of the Code of Ethics, and believe it adheres to the higher will of the community, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I agree with you, and I bet you, Brian, as I'm looking at page one oh four, so, you know, see, I really don't like to be pointing fingers at you, it's not comfortable for me, but I'm feeling that you're saying since this was repealed, you brought up that this Code of Ethics was repealed in two thousand and eight, or whatever. And I'm hoping that you haven't thought that since that was repealed, that that gave you license to, in essence, to violate it? Because when I'm looking at page one oh four, help create an atmosphere of respect and civility, where individual members, staff, and public are free to express their ideas, conduct my personal and public affairs, respect for the dignity of individuals, keep the common good as my highest purpose, avoid and, there's, avoid and discourage conduct which is divisive or harmful to the best interests of Fillmore. And before I speak... And before I speak, ask myself the following questions: Is it the truth? Is it fair? Will it build goodwill and better friendships?
Let me just say, I don't appreciate the little spin that you put on those questions. However, those questions aside, I still believe in the code of ethics. It's just that simple. I disagreed with repealing it. We worked to revise it, and, you know, the council in 2008 thought it was time just to let go. I still feel it's important, and that's why I brought it back, and that's the only reason I brought it back. And I have brought it back numerous times. So I'm appreciative of the council putting it on the agenda so we can discuss it again. I think it's timely and it's the right thing to do for our community.
Okay, and I will agree with you. The reason it's timely is because of the allegations and illegal, actually, action that you did, getting down from the dais and discussing, calling yourself a citizen so you could discuss closed session items. I mean, that could have been a violation of the Brown Act right there. And that's for another agenda item, but...
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I'm done. Go ahead.
You know, I was on the council in 2008. I do have a great history on it. I won't go into it, but I will say, you know, it's easy to clip your pen to the paper and say you're going to endorse the code of ethics. However, it doesn't mean you're going to honor it. And I have no problem signing the code of ethics in this time. I have no problem with it. But let's not fool everyone. Signing it doesn't mean you're going to honor it.
I believe in the code of ethics. It helps the council to stay straight. Saying that, I also, I'm going to read with Brian, but yeah, I know I can sign a paper moving forward. I read the code of ethics the city had before it was repealed, and it just, there's certain things, it just doesn't make sense. For example, a code of ethics, as far as I understand, it used to have, okay, this is the way that you're supposed to be acting, but if you don't act this way, these are the consequences of that. And if you read the one in Sunnyvale, the one in San Jose, which is why I live in those two cities, it gives a lot more reason of keeping the code of ethics. It gives a lot of, okay, these are the, it's just not two pages. Here it is what you're supposed to be doing. No, here is what you're supposed to be doing, and there are consequences in not doing it. I think, and if you see how, especially the federal government is moving, everybody is moving into code of ethics, and it's called corporate compliance, and it's basically compliance of ethics in every single page. And I have no problem signing it, and I will promote it. I think that it's important for us to have. It is like a stop sign in my worldview. If you stop with the sign, that is not wrong, but if you go through, there are consequences for that. Our total support. Have good ethics, Ron.
We run this meeting by Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It's a simple, elementary procedure. We don't go by Robert's Rules of Order. This is more informal. That was never, we never abolished that. We did, I did vote for dissolving code of ethics. And I'll tell you why in a minute. But one thing, that Rosenberg's Rules of Order states, it has a paragraph about courtesy and decorum. The rules of order are meant to create an atmosphere where the members of the body and the members of the public can attend to business efficiently, fairly, and with full participation. And at the same time, it is up to the chair and the members of the body to maintain common courtesy and decorum. I am not for a code of ethics because I think it doesn't make people ethical. What makes people ethical is them and their choice to be ethical. And I'm trying to say this ethically, and I might try to say this fair, but Mr. Kamau, when he went down and he accused our mayor of plotting to get a lawyer fired after we had a letter from that law firm stating that this body had nothing to do with it, that was totally unethical. It's an accusation, and it actually could cause legal ramifications for us because apparently that individual was suing this former law firm. That's unethical. And I've been on this body for almost four years, and my opinion is you have been unethical every month. Okay? And I'm saying that, I'm not slap you, I'm just saying, that is your choice whether we have it. We still have rules of order. People break them. I tried to keep decorum and courtesy. I'm trying to say this courtesy. You know, I am. I don't know how to say it, but that was way over the line to accuse the mayor of something that is actually against the law, and she did not do it. And the law firm says she did not do it. So for me, you can have your code of ethics, you can vote in, fine. I will not sign it, but I will remain ethical, and I will, you know, by the grace of God, I'll remain ethical for the rest of my life. You know, that's our choices. Okay? So that's my point on it. We have to be ethical people.
Okay. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Mr. Deb Tucker?
Kind of listening to you guys change my thought process a little bit, but I'm going to try to stay on track of what I originally was going to say. You know, when I think about ethics, I think about my career as a medical professional. I think about terms that medical professionals use when dealing with patients or residents. We use terms like, above all else, do no harm. We use terms such as integrity, the ability to do something that's not easy, but it's the right thing to do. We use terms such as just caring, compassion, empathy, your ability to put yourself into somebody else's shoes. I think ethics, in a lot of ways, is more than just what the person is. It's what society deems is acceptable. Society works together with a series of ethics, and they turn it into laws. That's a sociology concept. I was raised enough to learn it, and college was a good thing. The thing I'll tell you is that while I understand your comment about making a person is supposed to be ethical, listening to the dialogue that's going on back and forth, I think what you have is the difference of opinion. And one person's opinion is not superseded by another person's opinion. And if you guys are going to make an ethical doctrine, you should take that into consideration. Whether you agree with Steve, or you disagree with Steve, or you agree with Jamie, or Brian, whoever's up there, when you get emotions involved in a situation, that creates an unethical situation. And what I'm seeing tonight, and what I've seen the last couple nights, is a person or persons expressing their opinions. Now, I may feel that you're unethical by expressing what you've expressed in the manner in which you've expressed it. You may feel that you're justified. But the point is, if both of you feel you're justified, and both of you feel you're ethical, then where's the reality? And that's where code of ethics comes in. You document that, you put it in writing, you give it something with teeth, that there's ramifications, then you develop public trust. That's where true trust comes in, and honesty, integrity, that's where it comes from. When you're willing to put your words and walk the walk and not just talk the talk. So I encourage you to do that tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bob Stone?
You know, when the code of ethics and conduct were discussed before, a lot of people said, well, you know, I had to sign one at work, so therefore, we should have one here. Other cities have a code of ethics, so we should have one here. I worked in the fire service. We had binders of instructions on how we're supposed to act. We had rules and regulations, administrative policy guidelines, which talked about ethics and conduct. And the fact of the matter is, I think all of you, when you get to that, I don't know what you go through, but you're advised of all of the rules and regulations that you have to live by and act by and conduct city business by. And I think they're good enough. For the entire history of the city, we've never had a code of ethics, to the exception of that short period of time a few years ago. We didn't need it. You guys are getting the city business done. Sure, sometimes some feelings are hurt, but it's not that bad. And what happened in the past was the code of ethics was misused. It was applied one time, not applied another time. It was for political advantage. It's happened in other cities. You don't have a code of ethics now. Why fix something that's not broke? And I guess that's all I have to say. And for you dinosaurs, us dinosaurs, Jamie, grandchildren are a great asset. You are a problem.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would just speak on this item? Close the public comment? Okay. Back to council discussion. And I would say, in addressing the issue of disagreements, yes, we all disagree. I have voted opposite of Jamie, Eduardo, Brian, Mr. Lee. I've held no, didn't make a big deal out of it. It's the way our personal decisions are made. So disagreement does not come in any of my feelings about this issue. The actions made by the people who turn the disagreement into something else.
I concur as well. I do welcome debate disagreements. I think in order for a decision to be made that's wholeheartedly meant for the city in general, there is going to be some disagreements. Obviously, we have different philosophy beliefs on how governments should be run. But there does come a time when an elected official makes a blatant false statement and continues to carry it out. That's wrong. And, you know, you're looking at these code of ethics, like Mr. Stroh conveyed, we're not here to cherry pick what's right and what's wrong, or what's going to carry out in your political agenda. So I, again, I'm in favor of signing the code of ethics. Again, it takes, it's up to the individual, individual councilperson to follow through.
Mayor, I recommend that we take a vote on moving forward the code of ethics and then appoint two council members to actually begin the work of drafting or modifying or going back to the previous code of ethics, whatever the ad hoc committee wants to bring back to the council with consideration of the need to have a vote to move forward the code of ethics and then set the work in motion by the signed council members. They're responsible to bring something back for whatever council would be considering.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion.
A motion on the table. I'm sorry, though.
I know that we go into this question, well, the motion is what it is, but I was just talking to our attorney, and we have already some good code of ethics. And the leak, we have some already set, so I'd like to review them as well. What I would like to, what I do is, if we can modify the motion, then just ask our attorney to bring us some samples, so I'd like to review them on this item.
That was my recommendation, to the people to provide that information.
Sure, the ILG has a really good template of code of ethics by you as well, and some of others that you have adopted.
So you have the existing motion. Did you want to...
I'll modify and go that direction. I thought it'd be more timed, I guess, conservative to have two people review various codes and bring something back to the council, recommendation, but if we want to use our time in city council meetings to review and discuss each one that comes before, is that fine? That's what I'm thinking. Council desires all to modify the motion. That's our change. I have a second.
Motion is a second for the city attorney to bring a couple of drafts from the ILG or the other cities, ICMA, whoever, a couple of drafts, code of ethics and conduct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is discussion and possible council action concerning the release of information about the request for qualification proposals from closed session. This is the, when we were doing our city attorney interviewing, our KIMBIDS came in, bits were good to the Gazette. Anyway, I think our city attorney is going to make some, do you have any comments on that?
I mean, I'm not exactly sure what the council is looking for. I can just explain in general, the rules under the Brown Act about closed session materials, and then, I think, maybe questions from the council can lead the direction of the conversation from there. Just in general, as I'm sure most of you are aware, there's something called the California Public Records Act, which generally makes all records and possession of the city and its consultants public. So anyone can come look at them or ask for copies, things of that nature. But there are also exceptions to the Public Record Act for records that either cannot be made public because, for example, they contain information about criminals, or they have conditional exceptions, such as materials that are provided under attorney-client privilege from the city attorney or other attorneys providing services to the city, to the council or various staff members. Similarly to that, there is an exception from disclosure when there are materials that are provided in closed session. And what the Brown Act says is that unless the majority of the council votes to waive that disclosure of conclusion, that those records may not be disclosed publicly. So if a staff member or a member of council does disclose closed session materials without a vote of the council authorizing that, that would be considered a closed session, I'm sorry, a Brown Act violation. So that's an overview of what the Public Records Act says on closed session materials. Bowing up with that, it's my understanding, there's been an issue about documents in closed session related to a request for proposals. And however, Supreme Court has specifically said with respect to materials submitted in response to requests for proposals, that those documents are exempt from disclosure unless the disclosure is waived until such time as there's a contract to award the contract for the proposals on an agenda. So for example, in Fillmore, the agenda goes out on Friday for a meeting that's held on Tuesday, so that Friday, once the agenda becomes available, someone can come in and ask for copies of the request for proposals. And that's so they can analyze the information that was submitted to make sure that they think the city is picking the right person and getting a good price based on the information available on the agenda. If those rules are violated, action is going to be taken, either criminal or...
And specifically in this case, when we got the RFQs from, I think there were like 16 or 17 proposals that we received, we met in closed session to discuss them, and those proposals somehow made it into the Gazette. There were repercussions of that action, specifically, Eduardo and I, we were on the Specifically, Eduardo and I, we were on the subcommittee interviewing our final candidates and one of the candidates for city attorney had read the article, whoever was in the paper, about their bids and they were very upset because they knew that those prices should not have been made public prior to, during these negotiation sessions. So I don't know if Eduardo wants to comment on that, but that's how we found out about it. Was we found out about it from one of the candidates. He was very upset.
Yeah, furthermore, there actually were two of the finals that came to us and said, hey, let me tell how this affected because they said, why would I reuse my rate if I know how much everybody else is charging? So it did affect a lot, the negotiation they were trying to do. And at least one candidate said that and the other one said, well, I know what everybody else is charging. So, yeah, that really, really affected. I read it in the, like I said, and did my best to move on. But I do have a question for you. So in order for any document in closed session to be released or any information for the closed session to be released, it needs to be a vote that says we will release this information. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that didn't happen. That didn't happen. So that was the problem.
That and there. September 5th through September 7th, I attended the California Lead Cities Conference. And while attending different seminars, I was approached by an individual who was an applicant from one of the firms and saw my badge. And I do not have any recollection as to who this person was. He explained to me who he was, who this law firm was. And he was extremely upset. The phrases that he mentioned to me, and I'm just, I'm gonna make it very short. Number one, lack of respect, unethical, poor choice of structure. Also, there was comment that this individual would never want to engage in business with our city. After this conversation, you know, I, it made me, it was very disturbing having some individual who we do not know accuse you of being unethical, being, I'm not even gonna use the term, the other term, but it doesn't look well in our city. It shows that there is dysfunctional demeanor within our body. I did say to this individual that it wasn't the entire council who provided this information. I did convey to this individual that I would look into it. Having done the research, I'm pretty sure I know what occurred. And I feel that it's a travesty on our business character for Fillmore. It's embarrassing. And I did try my best to reassure this individual that the entire council, or the majority of the council was not involved. I bring this to light because it shows that within city government, topics around, especially we are perceived as doing underhanded things. And all this did was sabotage our negotiating skills with these firms that made it to the country. That is a problem. Anyone who doesn't think it's a problem, I question. I question their advocacy. Thank you.
I never give any information to the Gazette, so it wasn't me. So who gave, this body, who gave information to the Gazette? We have a quick investigation. I'm telling you, I didn't. I understand stats and optics.
Miss Israel, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I have read the briefing as to what our options are in respect to this matter. And going forward in respect to an investigation, seeing that our time is extremely limited, our financial resources are scarce. Does the council have the ability to ask or have you ask each member of the council the question? And have that individual tell God and the community the truth?
Well, Mr. Bush is asked the question, who?
I think it should come from a legal representative. I think it's something that's important. And I think it'd be formal to have each member of the council answer the question.
That's what everyone would like you to do. I never would do that.
Brian, you saying ask privately? I mean, I think it's a public issue. I never said privately. I'm saying publicly. She's gonna ask the question. Oh, to Israel, correct.
You want me to do that right now?
Sure.
Okay, can I start with you then, Mr. Seid? Did you release the information on the proposals for the city attorney position?
Absolutely not.
May I ask one? Did you release the information on the proposals for the city attorney position?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez, sorry, did you release the information that was provided to you regarding the proposals submitted on the city attorney position?
No.
Mr. Brooks? And Mr. Conway, did you release the information that was provided in connection with the proposal process for the city attorney position?
I will say this. In previous meetings where this was discussed, there's already biases expressed by other members of council that they wanted to move to censure without providing any due process for any individual that may be associated with this. So really, this is just drama at its best and bad politics at its worst. So I'm gonna leave it at that. The council's gonna do whatever it wants to do and I'll just.
Can I ask again then, if you're telling us you did not, do you have the information in the Gazette?
I'm gonna make sure my son. You heard my response. That is my response.
So you have no yes or no. I'm just clarifying for, we will not answer yes or no to the question?
Yes, I will not answer yes or no to the question.
I'm very, I'm very sorry.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure how to proceed. There is a, you're right, I guess there is a due process. I think as Brian expressed, I don't know that we wanna waste city resources on a due process unless you're requesting something like that. You see, I can have some speaker cards, but I'm gonna finish my thought. I lost my thought. So what do you do and what, is there a direction to go in if there's no accepted responsibility for an action?
Well, it's not that. Responsibility is the G. Accepted. And that question could be deemed in the investigation and you can, as the fact finders, by the way, you can decide what you think based on what was said. And then you can decide what you wanna do about it. There is a due process requirement for censure, which is a word someone brought up. If the council did wanna consider censuring someone, that would be put specifically on an agenda. And the person that is alleged to violate the rule would have the opportunity to respond to the charge. And a conversation would be had. And there's a full range of options that the city council can elect to criticize the person and admonish them. There's an entire range of just saying that wasn't great to taking. A censure is considered a disciplinary action, so it's taking away part of the job responsibilities of a person. So that's why you have a due process responsibility and it has bigger say.
Okay, thank you.
Good, answer this question. So what we have just done was a public investigation.
I mean, it could be deemed, you think that.
What we asked question out of, right? So of ourselves. So I would suggest to the council that we deem this as a, at least, basic, this was the first basic investigation.
Well, before we move forward, I do have a speaker card, so I wanna call up Bob's phone. Sorry, I didn't forget you.
I thought you had. Before God, God's happy. Actually, I think it boils down to a matter of trust. And you know, Steve, I think you're a lame duck member and it appears that you think you can violate the law of impunity. For that reason, I don't think the city should be exposed to that kind of reckless behavior and that the council member, that council member Conway should be banned from all future closed sessions.
Thank you, my friend. Is that something that is, would, could you kinda go through what options there are as far as the discipline?
From a censure, I mean, well, I mean, there's, you can start with admonish.
Admonish is a term.
Yeah, you know, just saying, you don't appreciate what's done, it shouldn't be done, it's gonna be done, do it again. You know, all the way up to censuring. And censuring could be different things. It could take away the travel benefit. You could, I mean, in various weird cases, you could ban someone from closed session. You can make them, you know, turn back closed session materials or the whole council turn back closed session materials so that staff keeps control of them to make sure that no one has the ability to terminate closed session, you know? It's somewhat, but it should relate to the alleged violation.
Is there anything in between the admonishment and the censure? Is there any, like a mid-range?
I mean, there, you know, sometimes there's a list of admonishment, condemnation, all these different things, but those are all. If it's not censuring, which is taking something away, it's all pretty much verbal, that would be it.
Okay. The big guy is just here. Alright, council, what are some of your suggestions, how do you want to proceed?
I have a question. Have this ever happened before and what kind of actions were taken?
As far as closed session avenues?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's everything. So yeah, there is my precedent for that. And we'll say that, you know, there have been ground act accusations in the past. They were unfounded. We spent a lot of money on conducting investigations on these unintentional, technical. The one that was, that was the big one that was so expensive was because of an unintentional, technical error made by Mr. Larry Penau. So that's, and that was, you know, that was just an accident. But this, this thing I think was intentional. It was done with intent to disrupt the process. Or I don't know if the intention was correct, but it did disrupt the process and it did hamper the city's ability in negotiations. So I don't wanna belabor the project or the, I'm done talking about it. So I wanna know what the council wants to do.
I would like to see, we can't get a straight answer. We can't get a yes or no. So I would like to take it to the next level and ask for a censure and ask for a, that Mr. Conway sees from attending any more closed sessions. If he gave, if he gave, I don't know who else gave. So if he gave written material and had it published in a newspaper and it hampered our negotiations and it embarrassed the city, that is, again, unethical. And therefore, I think there has to be a point where we, you know, my mom used to say, that's the pot calling the kettle black. And this is the pot, Mr. Conway said we wrote the Brown Act on a responding to an email some three and a half years ago or something, which the DA said was insignificant. This is not insignificant. This is very significant. It's bad timing, you know? But there should be consequences. I would like to see banned, or if, we may go the next step and see if he says yes or no.
Oh, that and there. For the public's knowledge, this article that published these bids was Wednesday, July 18, 2012. FillmoreGazette.com as well as print. So individuals are skeptical. Documents right here, two pages.
Okay. Well, Jamie, I agree with you that should be consequences, but I don't really, I'm not in support of spending a lot of council time on this. I would be in support of, I mean, verbal condemnation or something that wouldn't require another agendized discussion. So I don't know how the rest of the council thinks.
I don't know how much clearer an investigation is gonna be. You know, we heard from each member of the council. We took an oath and we, first, we're elected. And, you know, we all have, we all have to look at ourselves in there. And I think the no response is enough. I am not in favor of further incentive investigation that's gonna cost money, cost valuable time. I think, I know, I've heard of Jamie, I think we need to put on the agenda for censure. That's, we need a fatality to it. And if there's nothing else that can be said about it.
Alright, Ms., Councilwoman Gonzalez, what's your desire for a pursuit?
I, I think that an action requires consequences. Yet, I have to disagree on the fact that the time they're wasting on this is an investigation. I would like to have a proper investigation to be done. And if that investigation shows that, yeah, well, so we can take another stronger action. But I am very much concerned about this. And I do believe in you, that this will be something done. Whoever released that information. One of my thoughts that I was just thinking is, well, have we asked an attorney to, not our attorney, a third party attorney to do a little bit different investigation?
As far as the...
As far as the, uh, recommendation, does go further with, um, Ms. Scott. She first worked on this, gave the council a briefing. Um, now we have, um, Ms. Israel, who has lamented the same thing. So I, I don't know how much debate and investigation we're going to be able to do on this.
I don't know that you can, you can-
No, I, I don't have any input. Like I said, prior statement holds. I think, uh, some express views of council members at prior meetings are, uh, forefront of the minds, and council's going to do whatever it wants to do regardless of fact and questions, and I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay. So, you want to proceed with, uh, a censure, you want to proceed for possible censure? You want to proceed with the possible censure? Is that, do you people that want to proceed with, uh?
I move that we, uh, can move to our censure, Mr. Conway, on this matter. Uh, and we can discuss the level of that censure, um, at another meeting, but, um, I do not want to spend more money for investigation, I don't want to.
Well, I don't either, and that's why I'm suggesting it's, you know, some type of lesser, um, admonishment.
I'll say a motion.
An admonishment?
No, I'm opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I have motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? No.
Probably should confer with our city attorney to make sure that we follow the due process. If that's indeed the route you want to go, so make sure that, whatever decision you guys make, that we're, we're making sure that-
Do any, right?
Well, right, and I, I do have some follow-up questions, but, Madam Mayor, what was the vote on that, or two?
I'm not even sure what the motion was, the restatement.
Motion.
The motion is moved to censure Mr. Conway, uh, on this item, of releasing information to the, it's a closed session, actually. Right, so if you move to, or censure, then it automatically goes to investigation, is that not?
Well, I mean, that was one of the follow-up questions I had, because it sounds like two of the yeses want an investigation. I'm not sure what we can figure that out, if that's part of the due process.
Is there an in-house investigation with you?
I-
It's just a question.
Well, if, but if this were to lead to litigation, it would be better if I were not involved and we come away with it.
I would, I would suggest that to our, Ms. Scott. She started, she started this process, and-
What is, what is Mrs. Scott's, or Ms. Scott's rate, hourly rate?
I believe on the work she just finished doing, it was 150 an hour.
150 an hour.
Right. I'm not, I'm-
Well, it's too bad that we have, we're in this predicament in the first place, so.
I, I'm wondering if you're intending to wrap up your work for the city this week, since you were brought on by an experience and was nearing the finishing just after this week, so I would have to check with the staff if she was available.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor?
Do you like to speak?
I will pay the hourly wage, up to $500, to get this matter settled.
And there you have it.
I have another speaker.
This is to speak on the draw up here at the council in eight weeks. Um, I already called back, a few, a couple of you were here. We had this thing, is this a Brown Act violation, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
It is a violation. Did we, did we double-check that and make sure that it is?
You just correct, the disclosure of information.
Are we going to be sued because of this, yes or no?
If someone wants to-
So we're not going to be sued, but we're going to waste money to find out if it does happen. See, we're, we're drawing ourselves into a lot of, say, it did happen once before with Lori Hernandez, current councilperson. They made a comment, and we had, we spent money to find out if she violated Brown Act.
Spend the money when, when you want.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, we're, we're going into a lot of details here.
Yeah, I, I-
A lot of the council people have their own agendas, a lot of them against what they want, but we're spending way too much money here. We're going to drop, who cares if a citizen wants to drop their money, because by the side, the powers that ban counsel Conway, then fine. We're going to get into a lot of legal matters here.
But it's, it's been, it's been rendered that two attorneys have justified this as a Brown Act violation.
Okay, but we've also decided that it was a, we can also discuss, give them a reprimand of between, that would be just as fine.
Can I ask you a question? If no one's satisfied with what you're saying, I think it's a good point. So you're saying it's not, I'm putting words in your mouth so you can correct me, I'm putting words in your mouth, okay?
No problem.
Uh, so you're saying it's not worth the, the effort if it's going to cost us to, to, um, censor him, if it's going to cost more money, or it opens us up to some other litigation?
Correct. If it's going to cost us more litigation, we cut that, we give him-
Cut your loss.
We cut our loss, we give him the right, what, one person, a councilperson I mentioned, we give him a, a statement.
Option.
Yeah. If we stop with that, then we save ourselves a lot more money, a lot more time investment in our attorneys, outside internings, councilpeople, city staff, do this. Why, if we're all about saving money, why are we wasting time?
Okay.
Uh, I, I think that's a, a great statement.
Yes, he's, he's got it.
I think it's a very good statement, and therefore I'll do this. I will withdraw my motion for censure.
If I, most already, if you would have to request to reconsider the vote, and take a vote on that if there was a second, and then you would actually vote differently.
Okay, well, I'm requesting to reconsider this motion.
Okay.
I'll, 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 I second, I second some of the motions, I'll second these ones.
Okay, so we have to reconsider. Well, no, first you have to vote, uh, there's a motion, you can adjourn.
There's a motion.
So you need to vote on whether to then reconsider presenting your, okay.
So first, if you, if you have a, does it?
On whether or not to actually reconsider it.
Okay.
So all in favor, say aye.
No, no, excuse me, no. I said no.
I said no.
No, you're voting on whether to reconsider the prior vote.
Oh, you were voting on whether or not to, no?
No.
No.
Okay, so we are voting on the reconsideration.
Whether you will reconsider it or not.
I see. I know, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
No. I'll just say that I abstained, since I'm still sitting here.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, so now you can, uh, take a motion to rescind your prior-
Okay, you make a motion, rescind my prior motion.
We can second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. No.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll abstain again.
Okay. So your motion.
I move that, that's the phrase, that we, that we move to admonishment, uh, under wise counsel from the public, that we move to admonish Mr. Conway for the possible, um, Brown Act violation in this matter.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Can you, can you repeat the motion, sir?
Then we, let the, the city council, uh, give official admonishment to Mr. Conway, believe that he broke Brown Act by, uh, giving information that, that was sprung in a closed session.
Second that.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
No.
So motion passes to you.
I'll abstain. And I would like to say that, uh, I think the, uh, the outbreaks that took place tonight are deplorable. We opened ourselves up to the highest bidder to seek retribution on other council members. I, this is, that was really, um, a low point, I think, in former history, which has demonstrated. And I'm not talking about the council working through its, uh, its consociations. I also would like to point out that I've been admonished without proving anything, and the words came out of your mouths, the word "if" numerous times, and I'll just leave it at, and let's move forward.
All right. Well, Steve, based on your comments, I, I just want to say that if, if any one of us had released those documents from a closed session, you, I believe you and the Gazette would have, and maybe others, would have had, uh, had the DA doing an investigation on, on one of us. And that's not what we're looking for here, but I think we all are committed to, to doing the right thing. Nobody wants to, to pick on you, um, but we have an obligation to, um, admonish a council member who does something wrong. I mean, we're all, we all stood, and we all took that whole Brown Act thing, that was a, you want to talk about the deplorable? That was deplorable. Um, but this was, this was an attempt to admonish, so, so consider yourself admonished.
I, I, I find it humorous that we're talking about fees here in 2003, when, uh, former mayor and council member Walker was censored. We don't even know how much money was sent, spent on that, and Steve gives his remarks about being deplorable, these actions by the council members. I mean, that's a one-eighth. You're trying to suck this on us. That's ridiculous. It's, you know, again, it's cherry picking on what you feel is right, and that's what stays. You're lucky, you're very fortunate, that majority of the council was weak on this. Very fortunate.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? I, I think I have a headache. Um, item nine is committee commission and board reports. Any committee commission and board reports?
Um, I've already reported of the BCTC, and I need to say down the line, and that's a big issue for us at the moment. Um, I am also to the, uh, uh, Interregional Sanitation District, and there, there's, we're working on a biosolid, uh, plant, and, and trying to get a long-term permit, and they're operating in a condition permanent right now, and, and as you may imagine, every time they fix one thing, something else, uh, there's some kind of contaminant somewhere else, and, but they're very close to, uh, getting a permanent, um, permit, and, uh, but that's, that's, they're operating very hard and working very diligently to meet all the standards that we have in the state. This is a pioneering, uh, endeavor, and, and it's, it's one unique in the state. If you ever, if so was on, you go to Tulley Road and you could get a tour of the biosolids. Um, the other commission that I want to, is, uh, Cal Vans, uh, meeting, which is, uh, actually a phone meeting from people, with people across the state. You may have seen the vans driving around Fillmore, they have, uh, coolers in the front, and, uh, they're Cal Vans, they, they pick up workers and take them to work, and people pay a percentage, and it actually pays for itself. They're actually increasing, uh, three more or four more vans in Inter County, and, uh, they, they've also, they do for, for workers, but they also do for, uh, they also provide this service for industry in different, um, places of work. Uh, right now, there's one kind of going from Ventura to the Copeteria, uh, to, um, workplace. But they all pays for itself, it's, it's getting cars off the road, and it's, they're actually expanding across the state, and they're looking to buy some more vans, I, I gave them a, a number, so if you ask them, they can, they can video too. So that's actually a very successful service happening out there.
All right, thank you. Any other reports from council? Okay, we're going to move on to time, I have ten A travel requests, please travel. I'm the, items for future agenda, does anybody have any items for future agenda?
Yes, I believe, um, the hearing for Peter Egney, it had been going on last week and this week, and we've had no reports from the lawyer, so I would request that, uh, we put it on the next agenda to, uh, hear from that law firm, and also have our city attorney, uh, briefed on it, so she can give us her take on, on the proceedings, so we can have more than one, you know, ensure that it will be a closed session.
I'll look into whether that's happening or not, or if it was a little further out.
No, it's, it, I think, I don't know how long this is going to, I know it started like, like, um, 19 or something, and, uh, so they, it's, it's given last week and this week, uh, I don't know if it's happening yet.
This is the administrative hearing, there's two, there's two, one is the administrative hearing, which is going on now, and then it's the civil lawsuit, which is, I believe, uh-
Yeah, that's, that's dependent on the, on the, yes, the hearing, yes, it's not a court, uh, suit, it's, it's the hearing, it's a, uh, employment hearing, and, uh, but, we, we, we asked that firm for some kind of updates, but we haven't heard anything, so, uh, I don't-
They're still in the middle of hearing. Hearing is at place over, I believe, a month with selected dates, uh, is that a?
Yeah, so I'd like some feedback, what they think, how it's going, whatever, they can talk, they can talk to you, and then you can talk to us.
All over, do you have them? All right, I agree with you. So, um, any other agenda items from council? Um, any other referrals, comments, comments from staff? All right. Well, just a reminder, everybody, come to the debates tomorrow, it should be just as exciting as it's been maybe. So I'm going to adjourn to next meeting, and so our next council meeting is over there.